Which one of you do you want me to use for hosting? Are you admin? No. Okay. Okay. Who's admin? There you go. There you go. There you go.
I really appreciate the need you might even want to get ready to people showing up in person. I'm doing this, that's a few work it was not going to be successful. I just bought me filling with the items on the agenda. And I also want to say if you go on the school's website to the policies, there's one I J J. Which very clearly delineates the process for challenging any curriculum issue. I urge you to go through that process. Very last step in that process would be that it comes to the board if there have been no resolution prior to that. I just want to address that before we start there. Okay. We have two agenda items tonight. What I want to do so it's not disjointed. I'd like to get a motion to do both of them at once. A motion to review. The opening of the school under hybrid two and consider the next phase of continued learning at R S 78. The motion is to review the opening of the school under hybrid two, what we've already done. And then to consider the next page continued learning at R S 78. Mary, second, fifth, sorry. How about we do the presentation about administration?
Sorry, give me one second. Abby, I'm going to send it back to you. There's still a couple of people that I'm trying to get to identify.
Can you hear me on this? How does this sound?
And good to go? Okay, is that better? Okay. So in review of this first phase that we've been in for the past few weeks. What I'm hearing from staff is that the students have settled in. Pretty happy to be back to school. They are really liking the space that they kind of have around them. They are following the rules. They, you know, they're generally happy. I think the teachers feel really good about what's been going on. We have been in the process of doing some assessing to sort of see where kids are at. So hopefully before this next, we go into this next phase, we'll have that complete. I think at the middle school and high school level, I can say the same thing. The kids are settled. They're feeling good about being back to school. We seem, everybody seems happy. We've sort of talked to the staff. We spent a great deal of time with the staff in the past week about what this next phase would mean. And we've talked to some students to see kind of what their feeling is. And, you know, the overall feeling that I get is it's, you know, like the, you know, they can do the remote piece. It's okay. But they really want to be back in school. So we've worked really hard to try to bring forth a plan. That's, we hope everyone's going to be happier tonight. Are there any questions that I could answer before I move on in regards to the, this phase? Okay. If, if one comes up, just please feel free to ask. So some of the considerations that we had to take, you know, into, in account for in going to this next phase. Where obviously student and staff safety, current M D O E and C D C guidelines. Maintaining the social distancing. That's really important to our staff still. Classroom size is also very important to our staff and I think our students. The, you know, do we have available staff to make this happen if we went back? How will breakfast and lunch be served? What will transportation look like? And what are the logistics around building, the building cleaning and sanitizing needs? Those were some things that we took into consideration. Pretty essential.
Hold on. Can I screen share from here? So give me one second. I forgot to screen share it to the Zoom room.
Well, while we're waiting, I will reiterate what Georgia said. The most amazing thing is how well the students have done with the math. We were like, we were playing, we're like, oh, the students are going to consult. This and saying the mask is going to be such a challenge. It's been like a non-issue. Good?
Yep, sorry about that.
Okay, so here is our enrollment as of nine twenty-four, two thousand twenty, like eight thirty A M. I don't know if it changes daily, it seems like. The, I believe the board got something sent and under some of it, there was some purple. And those are just projections that, you know, going to hybrid one. We made some projections about students that could possibly move from remote to in-person, but these are right now what we have. So you'll see we're about a hundred ninety-seven total. That's Oak Street and the building. And that doesn't account for any homeschool. That's strictly students that are in person or remote. Our high school is up to seventy-one. Last year I think we're at fifty-nine. Fifty-nine is, that's way up. So if you look at our in-person, so the K two stand, the primary scale have forty kids in person. If everyone's here, three-five, we have forty-three. Six-to-eight is thirty-four students. And the high school, we have sixty-two in person, but because of fosters on Green Days, we have fifty-three in the building. And on Gold Days, only fifty-two. And that's, so right now, it seems like that changes on a daily basis. Are there any questions about enrollment? Okay, so high school of hybrid one is really not going to look much any different than what it is now. We can get the kids back in the building. Miss Berry created a schedule that, you know, keeps class sizes down. I think our biggest class in the main part of the building would be an English class of about fourteen, at six feet. Mr. Musk has sixteen or seventeen in here, but we're looking to split those up at times, but that managed the space holds that. So the daily schedule remains the same. We'd still serve breakfast and lunch in the classrooms. I think that's still going to work. They can stay six feet apart. The cafeteria still won't hold everyone in six feet. Students are still going to move to the content classrooms. Rooms will be cleaned between periods. Wednesday will remain a remote learning day. Face covering is required at all times. So there's not a lot of the kids can see different. It's all the. That was easy. So middle school is going to be a complete change to what we're doing now. Right now, we have the kids moving. So what we did is we split the eighth grade. So we can fit them everywhere. When they come back, we're going to have to keep the eighth grade together. So what we're going to have to do, the students are going to be in three rooms, grouped by grade level. The eighth grade will have the biggest room. There's thirteen of them. The next group will be in the social studies room and then our math room will hold the sixth grade, which has like ten. We did this because of the science room. Our science room only holds nine people at the tables. We are trying to maintain six feet. But these teachers have to be that far away and you start getting too many kids in the room and the teacher can no longer move. So teachers will move from room to room. Students will still move their specials. That eighth grade class poses a little bit of problem in the music room, so that will probably happen in the cafeteria. Breakfast and lunch are going to still be served in the classrooms. If the eighth grade class seems like it's a little too big to eat in classroom, because once the mask come off, they're eating, it gets loud. You'll, they move them up to the cafeteria. The daily schedule remains the same. Wednesdays will be remote. Face covering will be required still. So it is, it is a big change. The teachers, we worked really hard to make this work. It took a lot of brainstorming to like figure out how people are going to move, how specials are going to work, where are they going to have a prep? So I thank the middle school team for making that work.
Okay, so this K five is, is the big one here because we have eighty-three kids in the elementary wing. So the goal here was to try to keep our students at roughly around eleven students in a classroom. Sort of maintain what we're doing now, as close as possible. So what we've created is a primary pod and an elementary pod. The primary pod will contain four classrooms. The classrooms will be, a classroom where it currently happens, one classroom, grade one classroom where that currently happens. A K one split, which will happen in the three K classroom. And a grade two, which will continue to happen in grade two. And elementary pod, it will contain four classrooms, grade three, grade four, which are half, will continue to happen in their classrooms. A four-five split, which will now happen upstairs in what is known as the title one space. And grade five. So the K one split classroom, and I just want to make sure I'm clear here. This isn't a multi-age classroom. This is a multi-grade. And so there's a difference here. We're teaching kindergarten and first grade. What, what we're trying to do is to get the thirty, some thirty-three kids that are in K through one into three different spaces so we can spread them out. So Mrs. La Liberty will be teaching that in the K classroom. In the four block five split classroom, we have not yet hired this person. We are in the process of advertising as we speak. And as I said, that will happen upstairs in the, in the title one room. And title one will move into the library. So there's a lot of moving parts here. We've got to move some spaces around, which is going to take us a little bit time to do that. Breakfast and lunch will be served in the classroom. If a class exceeds capacity for feeding, they will eat upstairs. We potentially may have a classroom that, that might, you know, our second grade classroom might be a classroom that we might have to send upstairs to feed. But we'll work through that when it happens. Six-foot distancing will be maintained, as Seth alluded to a little while ago. Teachers need to maintain that six feet. So it's still really important to try to keep our numbers down. Our, our elementary classrooms is pretty small. You guys have not been down there to see them lately. Base coverings will be required at all times, other than meetings or outside. And Wednesday will remain a remote learning day. So again, what this is going to accomplish is it's going to keep class sizes small. Teachers are going to be able to focus on individual needs a lot better. The, you know, the teachers are already in the elementary level doing a lot of this differentiation. So this, this is going to do, sort of, it's going to take some planning time, but it won't be a difficulty for them. They'll, they'll, they'll move aside if it's with this. And it really only impacts two classrooms per se. That K one split and the four-five split. Everything else will function as it has. Do you think that's it? Oh, the timeline. Sorry. That's a really important piece. Okay, so Seth talked about high school. High school can go back to hybrid one, Monday the twenty-eighth, as planned. We are asking that middle school can be pushed out until October first. We are going to need next Wednesday to be able to move the teachers' desks and things out of their classroom. And they're going to have to have a, like a, sort of a hub set up where they, they can have all their materials and they can go and have their planning time and all of that. So that, we're asking for a day to do that around, you know, what they're already doing. So October first would give us one day to do that. And for the elementary, you know, the elementary teachers, they are still trying to finish up assessments. We are going to have to move like several spaces. Teachers are going to have to, you know, work together to plan this. So this is going to take a little bit more time to do that. Again, our priority here was to try to get everybody in the building, which we've done that. And still maintain the spacing that makes everybody feel comfortable and safe.
Does that sound all right? Real, real quick, I want to do public comments before we move into the board discussion. Seth and Georgia, you're all set? Okay. Let's start with any public comments we have in person here, Kirk. And if you have any, I'll put the smartphone up there. Come on up, state your name, please, if you have any questions or comments. Okay, can I have that done?
Nothing at the moment.
Okay, the board discussion then.
Test one, two. Can everyone hear? Yeah, okay. First of all, thank you to the staff for putting together the administration. I know you guys are all working long hours because I have some administrators who live on, one administrator lives on my street. He's out the door before I leave and sometimes coming home after. I put in pretty good hours in the day myself, so I appreciate all the extra effort. A couple of questions. So there was a comment made about the teachers have to maintain six feet in those pieces. I guess I was confused from that, from my reading of the guidelines in the sense that I know we had this discussion at the beginning about the three feet versus the six. But my understanding is, is that from what I've read in the guidelines, that a teacher can be less than six feet, one if they're masked and all the other safety features are in place, they can do that. Is that, are there certain safety features we aren't able to do currently at the school where that would allow a teacher to stand within that six feet piece? So that's why we have some of the complications of spacing. And I've got a few questions. I don't know if you want to do these one at a time or you want the whole list and then get it.
Okay, that's, that's a good question. Chris, I think the way the guidelines read right now is that teachers need to maintain six feet whenever feasible. Okay, so they really need to try to keep that distance. Students need to maintain three to six feet.
Okay, so, and that's how I read it as well, but that, that being said, it sounds like to me that if for most of the time the teacher is able to stand six feet up front, to walk about the room occasionally shouldn't be an issue with that for the most of the time that they're able to do that. So I'm just thinking about that space-wise, we can maybe fit those one or two extra students. The second thing is, is that I remembered an original plan and maybe that was covered, is that the cafeteria is supposed to be used as an extra classroom. It's the whole reason we're supposed to have everybody getting in the room. Is that currently happening or is that only for a few classes a day? So that's allowing you the ability to have students eat lunch up there? I just wasn't clear. There's a little disconnect reading on that.
Yes, it's right now that multipurpose space is being used as a classroom for study halls, mostly for high school. And if we, if we needed to use that space for cafeteria, the space would have to be cleaned and transformed into a cafeteria space before. So there's, there's a little movement that happens there.
Okay, thank you.
In that, in that space with the hybrid one plan, most likely will hold specials. There are special rooms upstairs.
Okay, all right. So thanks for clarifying that. The, when we originally talked about it with the board proposal back in August was that our plan was to have all the students back in school for hybrid one on September twenty-eighth unless safety issues arose that would prevent that from happening, from my understanding. What I'm hearing a little bit is logistics is more the issue than, than safety issues. And my understanding, it seems like, and maybe I'm reading this wrong or misinterpreting, but it sounds like the reason we're waiting until October thirteenth on the K two-five is that we need to hire another staff member. is that we need to hire another staff member. There isn't anyone, any way to kind of reshuffle the debt with the current staff? Do we need that, need to do that? Or am I misunderstanding what you're saying?
No, not at all. The reason that we need to wait until the thirteenth is because classroom spaces are going to need to be moved, and probably we're running classrooms, you know, we're trying to run classrooms to teach kids right now during the day. So we need that, the seventh and the eighth and the ninth, which, the seventh is our remote day, the eighth and the ninth are workshop days, to be able to make that movement happen, without disrupting learning for the kids. As far as the teacher goes, that can happen relatively quickly. I hope to make a decision on that next week. But, you know, there's, you know, that person is going to need a little bit of time.
So, if you could clarify a little bit more for me on the moving part, because that's the part I'm trying to understand. Does the move require maintenance people, staff people involved? Does a staff person have to physically help move? Or is it, I'm just thinking outside the box here, is there a way that, you know, we're going to have to sterilize the school and all that stuff? If there was eight or ten volunteers from the community willing to come in over the weekend and help move stuff, would that move it up? The reason I ask that is because a lot of constituents that I've heard from, especially in the K two-five, they're really struggling with the home. In fact, my wife tomorrow is, one person's coming to work at our house because the mom is just at wits end with some of this stuff. And I understand it's a stress on the staff and all those parts, but there's, some of the parents, two weeks might not seem like a long, but for some parents, it's going to be an eternity. I know people in this community have had to take sixty percent of their job time off in order to meet that. And I just didn't know if there's some out-of-the-box thinking we can do here that allows staff or volunteers to come in and help with this move? Is it all planned out? It just needs to be executed and you need those two days? Or is there something we can do? Because I for one, and I'm sure there's others out there, that they will have to step up to help with the physical part, whether it's in the evenings or something like that. Or maybe, we do have some extra money that came in from the COVID stuff, and we pay the staff that does, Jeff's crew overtime or something like that, in order to get this accomplished in a shorter timeframe. And maybe that's not logistically possible, but I know that's a question out there.
So there's a couple pieces, you know, the manpower would help move stuff in a quick fashion. But the other piece is, like, for instance, my son is in fifth grade, and I believe he's only been in school maybe four in-person days. So as far as the assessments we've done, planning, the teachers are still getting their feet under them. And so next Wednesday, we have our first RTI meeting, and that's a big part of planning this moving forward. So yeah, we could probably get twenty people in here and move stuff, but to expect the teachers to go to a completely different model in that amount of time is just not realistic. Because what's been happening is not only are they, you know, this is probably the hardest thing elementary teachers have ever done, and hopefully will ever have to do in their careers, to layer on in real time, also planning for another model on top of what's going on now. It's just not feasible, in my opinion, for people professional. And so this plan, it gives us that time to finish our assessments, get the kids in the building a few more days in person, use those professional days, teachers can prep, get ready, they can clean out the pre-K room. Because we move rooms, like, there's kids in the building, you start moving it without a break in the process, you're disrupting that process. So yeah, we could, the physical piece could be done by a lot of people, but there's a lot more. That plan may look easy on that screen, but is a huge ask of the teachers to switch gears. So that's why we're asking for it.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, because I know when we originally talked about this back in August, you, the team had suggested we wait till after the Columbus Day break to kick into this part. I know some of us pushed for this earlier September twenty-eighth. So it sounds like we've kind of got a compromise here to get to those pieces and do that in a fashion. Is there anything else that can be done for, like, a hotline or something like that to help some of these parents that are really struggling on the hybrid piece? Do we have some capacity on staff or volunteers? I know I mentioned that this summer about possibly getting some educational volunteers or doing something to help with that. Because I think there's still quite a bit of struggle, from what I've been told, especially on the younger levels of accomplishing, especially with only, as you've said, Seth, some students have only had four in-class days. So it's hard to get grounded in that schedule.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, Shelley LaLiberty right now is helping with troubleshooting a lot of those kinds of issues that we come up, you know, are coming across right now. But I'm not aware of a whole host of issues that are happening. If there are issues, I'm not hearing about it.
Okay, so, as board members, we're kind of the ears to the ground, some of us have talked about that. We're kind of, we get hit with stuff sideways, which obviously our job is to properly educate them and send folks in the right directions. So who should be the go-to person? I have a parent get touch me, says, "I'm struggling, I can't, we're a kid, we're not quite getting it there, we're having to disconnect, connecting with the staff, those pieces." Who should they become?
If they just called the front office and just said they're having an issue with whatever it is, Kim is going to get them to the right person to help them.
Okay.
We will troubleshoot that for sure. We don't, the last thing we want to do is have families struggling with, if it's an internet issue or, you know, trouble accessing their CSO or whatever it is that they're having issues with, we will troubleshoot it, we'll work with them. So even if it means, you know, us, you know, having the parent come in and sitting down and working with them, we've done that a lot, so.
Okay, well, thanks for clarifying my question. So, if I understand it correctly, we can set this, if we approve this tonight, we can set the stone. September twenty-eighth, high school, October first, middle school, day after Columbus Day, which is Tuesday the thirteenth, K through five.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Deb, I'm sorry, I think I might have skipped over you.
Georgia, I have a couple more regularly focused questions for you. Talk a little bit about why you made the decision to make that multi-grade rather than multi-age. I know historically, you've had a multi-age program in place, particularly K one. Could you share a little bit of the thinking about that?
Sure. It's a different approach. Multi-age approach is a much different approach to a multi-grade approach. And really, what we're trying to do is not have teachers teaching a K one combination at the same time. They would virtually be teaching kindergarten content and first grade content. So that's the difference in there. The other piece is us, the logistical piece for us is really just trying to get the numbers broken down, so we can get them fit into the stasis and still feed them.
All right. And I noticed on the calendar of activities for the day, that even at K five, the students zoom on their days they're not in person, around the specials and social-emotional learning. Are they doing that? Are they zooming at the end of the day? Or do they just check in in the morning, get their assignments, and then are free for the rest of the time?
I'm not sure of the answer to that. I'm going to ask either Shelley or Brittany DePumpo to speak to that.
I'm just curious, on the schedule for K fives, I know on the days they're remote, they log in in the morning to do check-in, and they download their assignments, and they're on CSO. But they're also accessing their specials from one to two-thirty. Are they doing that on Zoom? Or is that not happening on the days they're not remote?
So the only time K five checks in is at eight-thirty in the morning with their teachers, for attendance pretty much is from kind of activity. They have something coming out from teachers eight-forty-five, nine, all their activities. Because we don't want them doing six hours of work, we schedule it based on their age. Teachers, about an hour and a half or so, and then I would say, oh, it wasn't six, no, no, sorry. Specials and social-emotional curriculum, we said twelve, but now we pass them to go to nine, because some families have been finishing earlier, so we don't want to have them be waiting around for that date, and you know, the kids are better learners in the morning.
Absolutely, and I understand the logic of that. I just was curious about the initial schedule.
Yeah, no zooming, other than eight-thirty.
I've heard some conversation in the community that the little guys are not participating in Zoom. Do you have a way of monitoring who's online, who's not online?
Yeah, so when they sign in, they either have their own name, or we can see their faces, they put their screen on, and that's how we take attendance. If they're not on there, we mark them absent. If it's a technical problem, they're supposed to call the office and tell them that it hasn't been working for them. And then they'd still be marked present if they did their activities for the day.
And obviously, some of these questions are going to be moved, because the kids will be in school four days a week. And I realize this is an organizational issue, but I was just curious as to what kind of follow-up happens if you consistently have somebody who's just not, I mean, we heard from a parent who essentially says, "I can't get my kid to log into Zoom."
Yeah, I mean, I think it's different for each grade. Thankfully, for my grade, I've had wonderful participation so far, but like we said, some kids have been here five days, and then they've been remote learning, you know, three days a week, however much that is. So I'm not sure we've got to the point where it starts going down like we saw in the spring. Like, in the spring, it was like everyone was doing it, and then, you know, we started to see that they weren't checking in. I'm not sure we're at that point right now. Hopefully, if we go to this hybrid one, we'll just have Wednesdays and we'll still have those check-ins. But I don't think, we're kind of like the honeymoon stage right now, where people are checking in. At least for my grade, I can't speak for everyone else.
No, and I appreciate that. My granddaughter, who is at the southern side of the state, who almost refused to go on Zoom toward the end of last year, and lost a tremendous amount of ground as a result of that. So I was concerned about whether or not we would keep track of those little guys who maybe weren't participating like we wanted them to.
So I can add to that piece of it. Based on what happened in the spring, we have a pretty strong student services team here. And so in the event that we have students not zooming in, or we see a decline in that, our student services will kick in and start reaching out to families and, you know, there could potentially be a home visit, or, you know, we would just try to get, you know, try to understand what was getting in the way of that, so.
I think that's terrific, and I know you guys are going more than above and beyond with respect to keeping these kids as engaged as you can. That's not happening everywhere. So I'm really pleased that you are, in fact, doing that. Thanks, Georgia.
One more follow-up I add to the question with the workshop days. Workshop days are required to all staff to be available for those, correct? So if you, in theory, moved the workshop day to Friday the second and Monday the fifth, you could accomplish some of the moving that needs to be done in those pieces, and then have a one day in class on the sixth, and then have a day on the seventh, another day to kind of evaluate how that one full day went in with middle school and the K through five, and then hit the ground running for the next week. Like, since we're going to have Monday off, does that also mean Wednesday's going to be remote? Because we're going to have all the students integrated, wondering if we kind of push for that day in between was to clean, but if all students integrated, are we going to go four days, the thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth? Or is it going to be thirteenth and fourteenth remote, fifteenth, sixteenth? I'm just wondering if there's a way to try to move the timeline up a bit, just a week, to try to help some of these families struggling with the whole remote thing?
From my perspective, it's going to come back to the physical part can be done, but I don't think we'll be ready to roll this out for the teachers. You know, the assessment, like, we're doing, you know, so we'd have tomorrow, and then two more days, we'd have our RTI meeting, where we're going to do a lot of work to see where our students are. Because we have some kids that are, like, you know, the spring, we have some kids that weren't in school for a long time. And we're trying to do our best to figure out exactly where they are, how we can best serve them. And, you know, the physical piece could be done, but I promise you that when we pick that day of the thirteenth, in my professional opinion, that is the best day to offer the best program. If we push it up, I just don't think we can hold off. I can't, the load that the teachers are under right now, they'll layer on it anymore.
So, I'm not familiar with all the acronyms. RTI is?
Response to Intervention.
Okay, and so those are happening during the workshop days?
They, no, it's, our RTI, our first RTI meeting for elementary is on the thirtieth.
Okay.
So they will discuss students of concern, and then on the eighth and the ninth, that's when they're going to start their, they hope to be planning the individualized learning for these kids.
So from the point of the RTI meeting on the thirtieth, then the staff needs a few days to compile before they need on the eighth and the ninth to wrap things out? I'm just trying to understand, so I can explain it to others that may not tune in tonight and understand. So I apologize for the extra questions, but it's, that's the part I'm struggling with, is just understanding the timeframe. You guys are doing a good job in spring, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important to remember that, that the days prior to the thirtieth and after the thirtieth, teachers are teaching. So they're not, you know, they still have to teach their classes, so they don't have time to do that. So we need, I guess what we're saying is, we need time to finish our assessments. We need time to have our RTI meeting and to individualize for these students in these classrooms. And if we want that done in a way that best serves kids, we need time to do it.
So the time that's needed, the RTI is on the thirtieth, then the time to do that evaluation, like you said, they're teaching the other days. I'm just trying to understand, when is that time to happen to get from RTI to implementation? When are those, are those separate meetings that are occurring before and after school hours or during the weekends, or?
Those are our workshop days on the eighth and the ninth.
Okay. But there's, what I'm trying to understand is, from the RTI meeting on the thirtieth to the eighth and the ninth, you've explained that they're teaching in between. There's no way to do, like, the RTI on the thirtieth, and then do the meeting on the second and the fifth? You're telling me between the thirtieth and the second, there's additional work that they need to do to prepare? So I can, that's what I'm trying to understand. And it sounds like a congressional hearing here, but I'm just trying to understand.
So on the thirty, like you said, we're going to have a meeting to discuss, you know, finally look at how the kids assess. And then from that point on, we will, the planning process will begin, but to switch gears instantly into the first and second, it's just not realistic to get ready for kids on the fifth. And the other piece is that K five plan, we still don't know exactly how we're going to do specials. We had a meeting yesterday to try to figure out how we were going to serve seven. Because we can't do specials with the whole groups. Like, we have nineteen kids in fourth grade, and we have no space. Like, to try to do that in one space in this building is difficult. So we're going to have our next meeting to just try to figure out how we're going to cycle specials in. We have ideas of adding possibly another special somehow. Because we, what the other, what this plan does is, when you have the kids in the five rooms or six rooms with three specials, everyone gets a prep. When you move into seven rooms with the same number of specials, suddenly you don't have coverage for prep. So we have to figure out a specials plan that's going to work with this, and we just wouldn't be ready. There's just so much that has to happen in that respect. Between getting, teachers looking at their testing, after the RTI meeting, starting to plan where the kids are going to be, planning instruction, the new teachers getting ready, that's not going to happen in two days. I'm guessing we're still going to be trying to figure out specials by, like, the seventh, just for time to meet. So yeah, that's why, like I said before, I don't think it's feasible or appropriate to go before the thirtieth.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. So specials, you're talking about art, music, gym?
Yeah, and we're going to try to get creative with something else. Yeah, and we're going to try to get creative with something else. We're 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 not sure yet. But in a part of it, the reason this sort of came about is for creating another classroom, for creating another class that we have to provide a special for. So that's, that's a difficulty.
Georgia, what assessment tool are you using? Are you still using the UELAs as part of that?
So may what what Mrs. Richards asked is, um, what assessment tools we're using? And so at the, we use different tools at different levels. Um, at the primary levels, they are using um, currently, right as we speak, they are doing reading assessments using the RIBBies and they're doing the math assessment using their Envisions math program. Free and up, we are, um, we are doing UELAs. We're not doing UELAs currently. We don't have that kind of time to do that. But they are assessing them with a RIBBie, a reading assessment and also with a math assessment. So it's, right now, they're using sort of formal um, assessment tools. Um, you know, not necessarily standardized, but they're formal. So they'll give us the information that we need.
Yeah, I don't think you could underestimate it.
Eric, Mary. It can't hear you on Zoom.
So what Mrs. La Liberty just added was that at the kindergarten level, we are doing um, is it the dibble? The Brigance assessment right now, or the new kindergarten assessment? So they are actually getting a standardized test.
And I think our justification for the community, Georgia, could very well be, I don't think you could underestimate the critical role of assessing where these students are is as you start back to having them in a classroom four days a week. Because we know, we have lots of kids out there who have lost a lot of learning in the process. Even if age wise, they're appropriate for a particular grade, learning wise, they may not. Yet so these RTI meetings and these assessments are critical to starting the year off with them so that they're in the appropriate learning setting for where they are. And so I understand the need for that extra time for you guys to have those kinds of conversations.
Thank you, yeah, that's exactly right. We really want to make this where they're at.
Just to provide one more example, um, you know, when I was meeting with the specials, like, all right, we're doing these seven rooms and, look, you're not going to have to have the whole group, so you're just going to have eleven. So this is me coming from my high school. You know, so you're just going to have eleven kids. And to me, that's like, okay, good, you'll have eleven kids. And they're like, well, wait a minute, those groups could be multi-gaged. And every, all our curriculum, all our planning, all our resources, we, you know, we taught, teach kindergarten as this, this, and then we get the first grade. So just that, that thing that seems so simple to us to a teacher is like, now I have to kind of redesign everything I've done. Like, everything I've done before, like, how can I teach kindergarten and first grade the same room with its music? So that takes time to do well. You know, those are the things I don't always think about. I walk into a meeting, I'm like, hey, we're going to do this. And then all of a sudden, I'm like, oh, wow, that's going to take a lot of work. So it is, it's, there's a lot of little pieces tied together to make this happen. I think I can speak for everyone, board, staff, parents, everybody wants to get these kids back in the classroom as soon as we can. I think we need to be careful of not just jamming them back in, but we need to listen to people that are actually in the arena and what they need to do to get get back in the classroom and actually to educate them efficiently. I think this is a, I think this is a decent compromise to do that. And essentially, Georgia said that this is now, this is black and white. Come October thirteenth, everybody will be.
You know, we need to keep that into consideration, too. We're trying to stay open. And um, so, yeah, I mean, if if it becomes a numbers factor and we're, you know, we're going to have to, we're going to have to really look at that um, in in a really, you know, with a lens of safety, because we we can't just start putting all kinds of kids in the classroom and expect, and still, I mean, the teacher needs to be able to move in the classroom. If we if we cram these kids, you know, too heavily into classrooms, teachers are not going to be able to be maintained as physically as possible at six foot distancing. We're really trying to do that. I I'm not sure if I answered this question.
We didn't lose the feed, we just lost the projector is what went down.
We just lost the video, sorry.
All right, we have comments on Zoom. Rose is going to read.
Okay, so there's quite a bit going on in Zoom, so give me a minute. Um, and there's a person in Zoom named Jeff, and I cannot read your comments until you give me your last name, just when I get to you. Sorry, I'm scrolling back up here. Um, the first comment was from Katie Willis. She says, as a parent, I am concerned with my child being in the Title I room all day with no windows and poor circulation, especially during this COVID situation.
So as our maintenance director spoke to this, um, our um, our, you know, our systems, our fans, our circulating systems are all running as they're supposed to. Unfortunately, this room does not have a window, but doors can be open. And um, it it is, am I correct in saying that, Jeff? That the Title I room, the ventilation system is working correctly in there? So there is an air exchange in there?
Okay, Joanna Farrar would like to know, can we get an explanation of why Wednesday will still remain a remote day?
Well, I think um, one of the most important things to really take into consideration is, four days a week right now, we are all looking at half of each other's faces with masks on. I think this gives students right now a chance to see their peers and see their teacher in a format that allows them to sort of um, work together um, and and actually see each other, see expressions. And I think that's important. Um, you know, it also allows us to clean. It allows us to plan. We need that time to to do that right now.
She also asks, will transportation to and from school still be available under hybrid one?
Yeah, if there if there's any transportation difficulties that that um, families are facing with transportation, they just need to reach out to us. We will, we will definitely work with them.
Nathan Kay says, Georgia stated that she is unaware of issues with remote learning. Brian, Seth and Georgia were all CC'd. How can she say that she has not heard of any of these concerns?
I'm I'm being truthful. If if there are concerns, I'm not hearing about them. If if there are concerns, we are working with families to do that. Mr. La Liberty sat in um, the conference room for two hours this week with a parent, working with this parent to to work this through. I'm not sure what the different difficulties are, but if I don't know about them, I can't help.
And I will speak directly to that question. Initially, Nathan, your your family did address some concerns. We worked together. Um, I haven't heard anything until very recently and I believe I'm willing to help, so.
Brittany Garcia just clarified when we were talking about the assessments, that grades K through four are also using everyday math. I didn't notice if anybody mentioned that. Hold on, then we lost the video. Um, Jeff Botcher asks, is there a plan in place if the school needs to go back to hybrid or fully remote?
Well, I mean, we'll be advised, you know, if if something happens in the school where there's a case that's ident, you know, we'll obviously follow CDC guidelines.
He also asked, are the kids who are currently 100% remote going to still have that option?
We have asked that um, families that have chosen to go remote um, stay so until the end of the quarter. It unless there are underlying circumstances. Obviously, we want to be working with families to help. Um, so if there are underlying circumstances that would require a student to come back to in person, they just need to reach out to us. But yeah, obviously, they continue to can can continue to be remote until the end of the quarter.
I think this might be dying here soon. Um, I think, real quick, back to the question about, is there a plan in place if we go to yellow in county, that type of thing? That was all covered in the opening plan, essentially. That that's been laid out, what we would have to do. If it goes yellow, we got to go back to hybrid two, which is what we're operating under right now. If it goes beyond that to red, then we'd go to the um, to the old remote model. But that's all been laid out in the opening plan that we agreed to and voted on last month.
Hello. So I just thought about a concern with the four days of kids coming in. I noticed that we don't have many hand sanitizer situations. Like, we have one in a hall, like for the bathrooms and stuff, but we don't like have a station or like, please hand sanitize each classroom you go into and all of that stuff. And that's my only worry, if we get the whole high school in, that we should have more hand sanitizing situations because I bring up my own hand sanitizer, but I know kids just touch everything and maybe never go to the bathroom. They're touching.
So right now, and Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that um, every classroom has a hand sanitizer pump inside of it. We can't have them in the hallway because we don't have a certain number of them because of the fire hazard and the state has dictated that. So every classroom should have them inside the doorway. That's not the case. We can double check that, but we've gone, we went through it. Originally had them outside of every single classroom. And then the state said that we couldn't do that, so. Well, we can, we can do some education around hand hygiene, I guess, at the high school level, um, to, towards. I mean, we can educate, but some kids are going to be more diligent than others. And to clarify, on all levels of the hand hygiene, like right now, what we do is um, for K through five, they sanitize as soon as they come into the building, they go into their classrooms. They like, it's basically sanitize in, sanitize out. Anybody that comes in my office, we do the same thing. When they go to recess, they sanitize before they walk out the door. Use the equipment, they sanitize as soon as they come back in or they wash their hands with soap and water in a class, uh, in the pre-K classroom or the bathrooms, I believe. Be if it's before they're eating. Some of that will have to be changed a little bit, obviously, when the classroom becomes a classroom again. So at the middle school level, I believe they're doing the same thing. So I guess we need to visit the high school. I answer your question, clarify some things.
We we should talk on them because maybe rather than we come down and say, wash your hands, maybe we could work for maybe some students to maybe, you know, work with the student body or take that on. So you'd be willing to do that? Sometimes it's more powerful if you tell your peers or your teachers. Anyways, a funny story about that, though. Today, we had a practice fire drill. It went to the second grade room. And I went beep, 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 fire drill. This one little guy, he's marching out like a fire drill stops like (pew pew). Sanitize walking down the hall, so.
A couple more follow up questions. I'm sure you're getting tired of these, but um, we've outlined, and I apologize if I get the acronyms wrong, the RIT is on the thirtieth, correct? And there's going to be two workshops. And then I didn't get a clarification whether or not we could go the four days for that week after October, of October thirteenth, or if you're planning on that Wednesday. I didn't know if twelfth is a holiday as far as for staff. That's a workshop day. I'm talking Wednesday, the fourteenth. Correct, but hybrid two has Wednesdays off. So it would go Wednesday to thirteenth, Wednesday off, then Thursday, Friday. And I'm asking if we can go Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday since Monday is off.
So my concern with that is the thirteenth is going to be the first day that we have every student in the building.
Okay.
And that Wednesday could be a res, like a, ooh.
Okay. How, going along that thread, how much longer, once we have everyone in the building, do we plan on having Wednesdays continue? Is it going to be through the end of the month? Is it going to be through the end of the year? I would like some clarification on that.
What what would be ideal for us is to be able to reevaluate that at the end of the quarter, which would be right around November sixth.
So evaluated on November?
Reevaluate.
Reevaluate on November sixth. So if I can understand correctly, the rationale for Wednesday is to allow staff to reset and evaluate where we are midweek? Is to do additional cleaning to the school? You know, as the board, we don't see the cleaning procedures, but I understand, is that correct? Jeff, we're having a deep cleaning every Wednesday of the entire school? Correct. But are you doing extra cleaning on Wednesdays? So like, I understand with cleaning, you have daily schedule, weekly schedule, monthly and annual cleaning. So you're beefing it up on those Wednesdays? So is that something on the October eighth meeting that unreasonable for the board to ask that you come back and say, okay, we're shooting for going five days a week at this point, unless we have a circuit breaker, kind of like what we did with the September twenty eighth? Because I think that would be helpful to families to know when five days a week. And I understand the argument, some schools are completely shut down, but there's some schools on the coast that are already back to five days. Now, depending on where you are in this area.
I need the hearing thing. So, I'm sorry, I think what, I got a lot of information coming out.
Sorry.
I think what I heard you ask was that on the sixth?
The eighth is our next meeting.
On the eighth. So technically, we wouldn't even have all the kids in the building at that point. So that would be hard for us to even be able to um, give sort of any updates to that. So I'm hesitant to say yes to that. I mean, we can certainly update on what what's going on with middle school and high school. But at the elementary level, our elementary kids won't even be in the building yet, so.
I understand that part. What I'm looking for is a a plan. I'm not saying it can't be adjusted. Here we are, we we said we wanted everyone back in four days a week on September twenty eighth. And we're looking at a plan here, which I can tell you right now, I am in support of based on the information given of September twenty eighth, October. of September 28th, October 1st, and October 13th. So what I'm asking for is to have a commitment come in on the 8th to say, okay, you know what? All facts considered and where we're tracking, we feel that the week starting the November 9th, that we're comfortable shooting for five days a week. You'll still have another, we can schedule another board meeting or something in between there where that can be evaluated. I think we're getting used to a couple of meetings a month at this point, is what's going on. But I, I think I would like to see at least a clear plan on that. I'm not sure of the rest of my board members, but that's what I would humbly request.
I think it's a kind of a big ask when they haven't even gotten everybody back to the building to ask them, can you do this? I think if we were to do that, we could do that, but we should do another special board meeting two weeks after the October 8th.
They're not in there. They might be.
At least give you time to.
To deal with.
Evaluate how it had gone with everybody in the building and then go from there.
I can't turn it up. I can't hear.
The question is, is there a rationale for why shooting for the end of the first quarter to go to five days a week?
So we're going into another phase here. We're going into Phase Hybrid One. This is big. We're getting all of our kids in the building. And I think we just need a little time to settle into this. And as Seth alluded to, if there's things that need to be fixed, if there's professional development that needs to happen, if there's planning that needs to happen, if there's schemes that we need to be working with, because they may need some extra support. If there's families that we need to call in to meet with because they might be having, you know, internet issues or issue, then this is the time for us to be able to do it. So I think it's really, really important to just, you know, we want kids back in the building five days a week, too. But, you know, we're, we're trying to be, we're trying to really look, take a look at what's, what's reasonable and what's realistic. And, and what's best for our teachers, what's best for our students. And, you know, these phases are very difficult. So we've spent a lot of time just getting to be able to come into Phase Two. And as some of the teachers said, some kids have only been here four days. And now we're, you know, all, already now planning to go into Phase, the Hybrid One phase. And that's a whole nother realm of planning. So there's, there is, there is a lot of work to be done.
Jeff, is your staff capable of doing the cleaning necessary to have people in school for five days a week? Answer is yes for Zoom.
I've got a good comment here, too, so. Yeah.
My only thing about the Wednesdays is that teachers are still expected to push out those lessons, in K through five anyway, because we're not synchronous to all the kids that are remote. When you've got one kid remote or five in your classroom, you still have to provide the reading lesson, the math lesson. And you have to record those lessons for five days. So that's what we're using Wednesday for. We're recording all of our lessons, same as specials in social emotional learning, recording all those videos and scheduling them on Seesaw to get ready to push out. That's what we're doing on our Wednesdays.
So Shelley, are you? If that Wednesday were to go away, could you get that stuff done?
Well, my question would be, if we go to the A through B, but my question is, would we then just want to remote? Would that be an option? Shelley, can you repeat that to the mic?
Yeah, so she's saying if, if we got rid of the Wednesday and we had people.
We got rid of Wednesday, would we still have to be doing remote? Would that still be an option? Because that's why we're recording those videos on Wednesday.
So I just want to throw this in, and this was a conversation that we had had earlier. And for those of you on Zoom, it's Lindsay. I also think of Wednesday and kids learning on Wednesday from home or learning trouble, whatever they are doing. And trust me, I have two K through five children, who it is not easy, and I am not going to sit here and try and say that it is. However, it also is, these kids are coming in, when they do come in, four days a week, or six hours. And they're trying their best to be in within six feet of their peers and their teachers, and they are in a mask all day long. And doing the best that they can. And if we, on Wednesdays, those kids get to learn without a mask on. And granted, it may not be the most ideal learning style, but they don't have to have their mask on, and they are free to be in their house with as much space and as close to whoever they want to, to be. And so it, I just ask that you consider the, you know, kind of the mental well-being of that Wednesday being a little bit different for them. I, I'm just not sure. Right now, these kids are doing great two days a week with their masks on and maintaining six feet. So then we're going to go and put them up to four days. And with all their classmates, I'm not sure that it's going to be as easy as it is now. And then if we add that fifth day on there. So I just, my instant thought is their, you know, just mental well-being and that Wednesday gives them the opportunity to see their teacher's faces and their classmates' faces when they're on Zoom. And, you know, for us, even us, I saw our new staff members face, full face for the first time the other day because we had a virtual staff meeting. So I just, I just think it's something to consider, so.
I would recommend we handle the alligator closest to the boat right now, and that is trying to get kids in the school four days a week. That's what this meeting was for. If we want to have this conversation, I think we can have it at the October 8th board meeting. Sure, I'm talking purely about the five days a week thing right now. I'm saying, I think we just tabled that. So Chris is saying he would like clarification on the week of October 13th. You mean, are we going to do three or four days that week? So I think Seth tried to answer that. He said, Seth, tell me if I'm wrong, but you said doing the one day on Tuesday, getting everybody into school, and then having a reset day on Wednesday is what you recommend for the staff? Do you want something, an answer beyond that? So what we'll do is we will put an agenda item on the October 8th board meeting to talk about moving to five days a week. Does that satisfy that? Anything else? Throw anything on there?
I do have quite a few things. A specific one that might, with what you're just talking about, is whether or not maybe it would be an option. Just a thought, what about bumping your October 8th meeting one week so you'd be able to address all the questions and report on things that are going after all the students are in the building?
Who do you want to tackle that?
What happened?
Well, they're changing the microphone to something.
They want to know why the board meeting on the 8th couldn't be bumped that one week. Well, like, to the next week.
Yeah, so the regular board meetings are scheduled for the second Thursday of every month. That, that's not going to change. I guess I don't understand the question.
They're just asking whether, like, if you want to discuss having all the kids back in the building, why you need a special meeting versus just bumping your regular meeting one week.
The regular meeting is going to take place at the regular time. If we need to have another one, we will, we'll schedule another one specifically for that reason.
Yep. Danielle and me would like to know why elementary cannot Zoom fully the way that middle school and high school are.
It's not age appropriate. You know, best practice. We do not recommend that kids are on synchronous Zoom. Zoom meetings all day long is just non. There's some, some research that says it's not appropriately with any of our kids. Yeah, I would not ask the teachers to do that for the kids all day. And judging from, you know, in the beginning, I know Evan, getting a half hour Zoom with that kid in, I can't even fathom, even for a fifth grader, trying to have a synchronous day with him. Also, synchronous is real time. You're logging in when your classes are happening. Asynchronous is more like the Seesaw where you post videos, recorded videos, lessons to do, activities.
Brian, would you just like me to have the teachers hold their comments about the Wednesdays to the time that we're talking about that?
Yeah, we are going to have that discussion. We're going to put that on the agenda for the October 8th meeting. Anything else? All right, can I get a motion to approve the next phase of the school opening plan under, per the presentation that was given by the administration? I'm going to, I'll spell it out. It is high school, 28th September, going to Hybrid One. It is middle school going to Hybrid One October 1st, and it's K through five going to Hybrid One October 13th. Chris, second? Karen, all in favor? That is unanimous. Motion passes. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn? Chris, second? Karen, all in favor? Good night, everybody.
Hey, the meeting's adjourned.
Kenny, I got you. You're good.
Okay, thank you. Goodbye.
Who's that?
I don't know. Well, they are with no name. I don't know who that is. Do you know who it is?
Oh, she's got a dog.
No, that's a different one. I, I think it's Amby Thompson, but I'm not sure.